Hello?
Sorry, having way too much fun here.
Hello?
Somebody?
Hi Steve, we can hear you. We're, we've not started the meeting yet. Thanks.
Okay, good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Township. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Motney? Here. Trustee Danenberger?
Here.
Trustee Milowambway?
Here.
Trustee Bowlin?
Here.
Trustee Hendricks?
Here.
Trustee Ward?
Here.
Trustee Crumpler?
Here.
Just keeping you on your toes.
Yes. Thank you. And we do have a quorum. And do we have public comment, Madam Clerk?
We received no emailed public comment, nor did anyone register to speak in person.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. And we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. And do, is there a motion to approve the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by trustee Bowlin and second by trustee Ward. And we are doing roll call?
I can just call it. I'll call it. Trustee Motney?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberger?
Yes.
Trustee Milowambway?
Yes.
Trustee Bowlin?
Yes.
Trustee Hendricks?
Yes.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda passes. No need to announce. We're gonna move to the regular agenda. And A, item A 6A is a continuation of the consideration and discussion of compensation for the township elected official, including the township board of trustees as requested by the City of Bloomington Township. And turn it over to...
I don't have anything to say. It's your discussion.
Okay.
If you have questions for me, you can share.
Does anybody have any questions? So do we remind me of the date by which we?
Yeah, October 28th board meeting is when we would do that. Preparing you ahead of time because we do have an extended deadline if for the middle of November, but that doesn't coincide with our regular meetings.
October 28th? Okay. Are there any questions, thoughts?
I guess I'll ask one question if that's okay. So I know Councilmember Becker has brought up what might there be in terms of the opportunities to collaborate for increased shared services between the township and the City of Bloomington in order to help both organizations gain scale and reduce taxpayer burden a little bit? And I'm wondering if you've had any time to think about that? I'm bringing it up just relative to the compensation because as the head of the department, as the head of that entity, your leadership and support would be very important for the success of that effort?
The one area specifically is human resources and I am beginning to research that with the city. I have not connected with the city yet, but that's on my mind all the time. I just haven't had the ability to get to it yet.
As you do that, I would just encourage you to baseline the current cost structure and what the future state cost structure might be if there is collaboration because I think that would be very helpful for us to demonstrate the dollars that will be returnable, if you will, to the taxpayers as we look for those opportunities.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. There are other questions? No? Okay. Nothing at this time. Thank you. We are going to move on to a report by elected officials and we're gonna start with Supervisor Skilruin with her presentation of the report.
So, can you hear me okay? Um, couple things with Evergreen Memorial Cemetery. I said I would update you on the damage that was generated from the storms. We just received a settlement claim with TORMA, which is our risk management today for $6,125. The actual costs are $11,450, so the cemetery will have to, you know, budget that into their, or provide the funding for the rest of it. But, you know, I went through the cemetery as they were completing it and it was pretty much done in the first month. I mean, it was amazing how quickly they worked at getting it accomplished. The John M. Scott plaque, which are made out of bronze, was completely destroyed, so that's been rebuilt. And a couple of the stones were being worked on as I was over there because the same tree that uprooted and affected the bronze plaque also affected several stones, monuments, and so but it's looking good now. And then the other thing with the cemetery is this is the last year for the cemetery walk. I think many of you have heard that. And so it's like a 30-year celebration and it's sad to see it go for sure. It's been a, a real eye-opener to many people at the beauty of the cemetery and and obviously the collaboration between us and the historical society has been tremendous. So we're going to miss that, but let's see, the other thing. Oh, the recycle pots. We've already had another semi, so this is two in a, in a couple of months. So, last month, or the last time we had it, we had a lot of mixed materials, so it was a transition of some individuals that are kind of spearheading that, the sorting and the collecting and I made sure they understood. I have a full log going back to 2020. But I made sure that they understood why it's important to sort and why it's important to stack equal quantities or sizes of pots and trays because weight means a big difference in terms of the income we receive from it. Any mixed materials that, that don't separate out the two, five and sixes are junk. And I showed them the quantity and they did a really good job. We had zero mix this, this last pickup, which shows that they're paying attention to the needs. And anyway, I don't believe I have anything else to, to say. If you have any questions? Nope.
Can you remind us where those pots go?
They go to East Jordan Plastics, which is in Michigan. They always provide us with an empty semi or mostly empty. This last semi had a little bit in there, so we could only get 24 pallets into it. But it's free to us. We don't have to pay for that because they're on a return deal from deliveries, so but I expect that by the end of this year, we should have one more semi. They're working very efficiently in there, in the, with the program, so.
Awesome. Questions for Supervisor Skilruin? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you. We're gonna move on to Township Assessor Scudder. Who is on the phone?
Hey, good evening. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Yes, we can.
I'm, uh, I don't have much to report on except for what I had given you. And the increase in EAV has continued to rise for the City of Bloomington over year over year. And I expect it to increase again this year with the expected multipliers from the county if we can't adjust the assessments as high as the Department of Revenue is calculating. So, that's all I have to say. If there's any questions, I'm available by email. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. And is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by trustee Bowlin.
Second.
Second by trustee Hendricks. All does it favor singify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll see you in a few minutes.
Okay. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler? Mayor Milla Wambly?
Here. We don't have any recognitions or appointments, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we're gonna move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We received no emailed public comment, but we do have one person, Serena Fish, registered to speak after you complete your statement.
Okay, sounds good. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of our views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order, and their time ceased.
Good evening. My name is Serena Fish. Two things tonight. I'm head of Westside Neighbors, Miller Park Neighbors member, and a PSCRB board member. One, one of the things on the agenda tonight is the parking street garage. I would strongly suggest someone decide where people are gonna park before you do anything, because we're really getting a lot of questions about it. Second is Wednesday, we have a special meeting of the PSCRB board, and it is at the library. It is not in this building. It is at the library upstairs. We have accommodations, I think, for around 160 to 170 people. The meeting is required. We invite public comment, discussion, questions, and suggestions from the community. The meeting's sole agenda item, dialogue with the Bloomington Police Department regarding Nonya Massey murder and police procedure. In relationship to what the Bloomington Police Department, we also will be having the normal police department and the sheriff. All will be there. Here is a flyer. Everyone's welcome to take one. And if you have a question and you can't be there, there's the contact here of myself and Mr. Taylor on the selection committee. We want people to be aware of, because we're getting so much feedback from the community and questions, that what do we do here in Bloomington that makes us one of the safest places? What do we do here that a lot of our numbers in that are not, and they're all better or lower than outside? So they're sitting here, if anyone would like to take one, and hopefully you can come. It's at the Bloomington Library upstairs, Room 1 and 2, Wednesday night this week, the 28th, from 6 to 8. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. And next, we're gonna move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Bowlin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Crumpler. And then we have clickers, right? Okay, so it's 6 to 0, so the item passes, no need to announce. Now we're gonna move on to the regular agenda with Item 8A, Consideration and Action on a Resolution Approving Authority to Provide Reimbursement to Connect Transit for Architectural and Engineering Services for the Proposed Downtown Transfer Station and Parking Garage in an amount not to exceed $452,000 and $178,000, sorry, for fiscal year FY '25 as requested by the Administration Department. And I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Jurgens for some initial remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll start with the why, and then I'll turn this over to Senior Deputy City Manager Billy Tyas to run through the agreement and some of the other particulars. The why behind this is that right now we have about 1,500 people that use the transfer station downtown every day. So we have a lot of people coming to our downtown, and a lot of people using that specific transfer station. This will provide a safer location for people to transfer from bus route to bus route, as well as the need to avoid crossing a busy public street. It will also provide a shelter from inclement weather under a covered, secured, staffed, lighted, and climate-controlled facility. We're fortunate because Connect Transit was awarded about $18 million in funds to help build this transfer center, and this is aligning nicely with our need with a failing parking garage at Market Street to rebuild parking at that location. So this is becoming some nice synergy between the city and Connect Transit. The Connect Transit Board has already approved this agreement contingent upon this council's approval. And with that, I will turn this over to Deputy City Manager Tyas.
Thank you, City Manager Jurgens. Mayor and City Council, hello, first of all. Just, I only have a few slides. I really wanna run through sort of where things stand and what tonight's agenda item is about. Long story short, I think you all know that this garage has reached the end of its useful life. And when I say that, that doesn't mean that it's not safe. That means largely that we are continuously having to put money into it to keep it safe. The city has spent almost $900,000 in short-term solutions to do that since 2019. That's things like shoring and structural repairs. And there have been times where we've had to shut down segments of the garage because there was falling debris, et cetera, et cetera. I show this picture not to scare, but it's more to show you literally, there are some sections of this garage that have wood beams that are put in place in order to maintain structural integrity. The picture on the left is at Market and Center, and the picture on the right is at Center and Monroe. And there are other segments of the garage that have similar work in order to keep things safe so that people can continue to use the garage. As the manager said, the city, the Connect Transit has received 18 million in state and federal grants to build a new transfer station. Right now, there's no structure. There are people out in the elements. There's 1,500-plus people who come in and out of our downtown, riding our transit system. And there is a need, there's believed to be a need, there is a need for a structure that will better coordinate those transfers and also provide shelter, et cetera, et cetera, for people. So we've got two things happening. We need parking, and there is a need for a transit center in order to help with the transfers of people in and out of our downtown. We believe, and we've talked about, that there's an opportunity for us to partner with Connect Transit to leveraging the grant funds that they have. And what I mean by that is we believe it becomes less expensive by partnering with them. If we were building this on our own, we would have to pay on our own for shared costs. Things like staging and earthwork, some of the necessary HVAC work that has to go into a structure like this, even if it was a parking garage, and other things, some of the structural costs, that there are some of those costs that can be shared or can be paid through the grant. We would identify that through the process that we're looking to go through. Again, so in our minds, it becomes less expensive to do this in partnership. And again, it serves two downtown, solves two downtown needs. Next slide, please. So in April of '23, the city council approved the Market Street site as the location for this combined use. And since that time, we've been working with Connect, just talking through what that could look like, what the rules of engagement could be, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We've also been talking about sort of how to get it designed and that kind of thing. And so the first step is that we went through a national RFQ process, and we mutually select CDM Smith to provide engineering and architectural design, again, following a national search. As a person who sat on the panel, they were clearly the best firm. They're a national company, but with local and Illinois partners who will be a part of this design. One of the things that I was most impressed with with CDM Smith was they understood our issues. And some of their slides and some of the things they talked about, they were specific to us. They understood some of the needs of our downtown. They understood some of the needs of our community. And so that mattered to us. They understood the downtown architecture, so that when they're doing design, they see and get the historic nature of our downtown. And instead of perhaps recommending and dropping a more modern structure in our downtown, they'll be able to blend it in with some of the things happening in our downtown. So as part of the RFQ process, we selected CDM Smith. As the manager said, the Connect Board has preliminarily approved a contract with CDM Smith for $3.1 million, contingent upon you considering and approving the cost of these services related specifically to parking and shared services. So what does that mean? There are some things that will be clearly transit-oriented. There will be some things that are specifically related to parking as part of the design. So the $452,000 fee, we went through the agreement, and this is 100% of the parking-related costs and shared services. 0% of the transit-related costs as part of that agreement, and then 10% of those shared items. And so we came up with a number of $452,178. Next slide, please. To be clear, and I wanna be clear, that that fee is for the design of two total levels of parking. If we decide to add a third level, which we strongly recommend, there will be additional costs associated with the design of that third level of parking. We don't know what that amount would be yet. We're still having conversations about that. And honestly, part of this first round of discussions and design will help us to determine what it is we need to do in terms of a third level, if we do a third level, a third total level. But again, we strongly recommend doing so. Next slide, please. And so project schedule and next steps. If you approve the agreement or authorizing the manager to reimburse Connect for those costs tonight, as you can see on the slide, there are certain things that we would start to move forward with. Planning and public engagement, there will be significant public engagement as part of this process. There will be a conversation about whether or not it makes sense to do what is known as a liner building, which is a space that could be used for a number of different things. It could be retail, could be office, could be a number of other things. Could be determined as part of this process that they don't do a liner building. I mean, that's still a part of the conversation that we need to have. One thing that I think is important here is that this round of design on the front end is for 30% design. So that means that it will be a gradual progression to a final design. And we would go to 30% first, which is not as detailed as a final design, which again would give us an opportunity and time to talk through how many parking spaces we need and those kinds of things. One of the other things that would come before you is that we've been negotiating with Connect about a sale agreement and a potential operating agreement. And so right now, the attorneys are working through the terms of that, and at some point, that would come before you as well. Just the things that would outline the sale price for the building. Who pays for demolition? Who does maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So right now, we're having those conversations as well, and they would come before you at some point. So we're working on that. Important thing to mention is if all goes as planned... Important thing to mention is the, if all goes as planned, the estimated demolition date would be spring of two thousand twenty-five, with a fall of two thousand twenty-six opening for the garage. And it's important to note that in part because some of the comments we have heard that people are frankly concerned about, what are you going to do about parking in the interim as this thing is torn down? Well, we are working together with, with some of our staff members. We're working with CMT, who was doing our streetscape work, to determine a plan for that contingent parking. So before a garage comes down, before a first phase of streetscape work kicks off, we will have a defined contingency parking plan that we will clearly market and, and, and provide to downtown merchants and others, so people know where to park while these things are happening. Again, if you all approve this and other items going forward. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Okay, well, it looks like we have a lot of questions. Well, we're just going to start this way. Councilmember Crumpler, and then Ward, and then Hendrix.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Billy, you know, for this presentation this evening. I'm excited about this project and plan is supported. I do have one question. This potential third level of parking that you mentioned, if a decision is made to add that third level during the design process, will, will the, the cost of that potential level come back to this council for approval?
I would say yes, it would have to, it would need to, and it should. So, yes.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ward.
Yeah, just two questions. I think I know the answer to one of them anyway, but I'd like to just hear it for the record. What, what kind of feedback have you gotten from downtown businesses, Chamber of Commerce, other, other institutions?
Sure. One of the things that we've heard loud and clear is that the downtown merchants want to see replacement parking happen on this site. There's been lots of conversations about perhaps solidifying other surface lots or finding, or, or doing lesser levels and that kind of thing. We've heard loud and clear that folks want to see replacement parking happen on the Market Street site. Having said that, we will continue to look for other possible locations and also the, the Douglas Street lots that are near the BCPA. There will also be plans to work on those as well. But largely groups have said they, they want to see parking replaced there. That and against some of the questions that we've heard tonight is where are we going to park when and if it comes down?
But are they generally supportive of the idea?
Absolutely.
That's being proposed tonight?
Absolutely, one hundred, I won't say one hundred percent, but absolutely people are supportive of this project and seeing it come to fruition. I mean, if you look at what's there now, honestly, and what can be there, it's, it's exciting. It's a transformational project. It is. There are lots of opportunities to do a number of different things in that building. And again, solve two downtown problems. One with, you know, the volume of people that come downtown, providing a better solution to, to transfer, and two, addressing our downtown parking issue.
So my other question is, where do things stand with the post office and what's the thinking there?
Without being too specific, there is a very plans are for the down, the parking, the, the post office to stay downtown. But they're, they are having conversations with another entity in the downtown in order to locate downtown. But the plan would be for them to stay there, and my understanding is that there's been a draft agreement. I don't know that it's been signed yet because the federal government can take a very long time sometimes. But I, I can't sit here and say it's happening, but it's pretty close to happening, if that's a fair way to say it.
Thank you. I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay. And okay, so we have a motion and, and do we, we continue discussion? Councilmember Hendrix?
Yeah, I'll be really brief because Billy took a lot of what I was going to say, which is great because it shows our city staff, you know, you guys are out in front of this and, and thinking about these things. I'm super excited for this project. It really will be transformational for our downtown, both from, you know, renovating a structure that is, you know, deteriorating, but also really helping to improve our transit abilities through Connect Transit. I want to go on record as saying I'm very, very, very strongly in favor of that third level of parking. We need it. You know, so many business owners downtown and their employees currently use that garage on a regular basis, and when we see the fulfillment of the downtown streetscape plan, we're going to need even more parking. And for me, I would rather see that parking be vertical than, you know, horizontal by taking spaces that we could use for other productive means throughout the downtown and less concrete, you know, in those sorts of ways. The other thing, and you again have already said it, is just being that broken record to say we got to have that solid communication plan because, yeah, what I hear often from my constituents is, where are we going to park in the meantime? And I know you guys are thinking about that, but I feel like we just got to keep saying it over and over so that we make sure we, we are committed to, to seeing that through.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Billy. And I think what we're hearing from you too is that the features of the project also impact the design cost. I think that's probably a pretty obvious statement. And it's my understanding that there is a plan to include retail at this location, which could impact, you know, the design costs associated with it. I'm, I'm just curious for context, what's our current occupancy rate now in downtown for commercial property? Do you know?
I don't know, but what I will say is that there is not, there's not a plan to include retail. There will be a review and a study to determine if it makes sense to do retail, which would also consider those things such as occupancy rate and potential uses.
I mean, one of the concerns that I would have is investing in brand-new construction, retail, and then vacating other locations within our downtown, which would not be helpful to the overall vision of the streetscape and the revitalization project overall. So just wanted to, to make that point. So thank you, Billy.
Okay. Look, we have any, oh, okay. Well, we do need more time, right?
Yeah, you are at a time.
Yes, okay. Motion for more time?
No.
Okay, all right. Well, let's go ahead and vote then. Okay, all right, we're, we're good. I keep getting the numbers mixed up now. Okay. Oh, so we have five Ys and one A, so.
That's correct. Donna Bowlin.
Okay, thank you. The item passes, and we are now going to move on to the Finance Director's Report. Do you want to say anything? Okay, all right. So we'll go straight to you, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. This is a first look at FY twenty-five. It's, we're three months in, twenty-five percent through the year, but it's still very preliminary. I, I've, I've, I talked endlessly about the delay in revenue structure. So we're going to only have, you know, one month's worth of sales tax, but, you know, we, we can begin this review of the coming year and kick it off with July tonight. Next slide, please. So just as a matter of review, you know, from a structure standpoint, that we represent these numbers. Obviously, you know, the annual budget, year-to-date months, those are the months of revenue collected. With our budgeting, we budget on a monthly basis. And so these numbers, many, most of them are seasonally adjusted according to budgeting by month. Some of them are just totals for the year, so they're straight line, but we try to include, especially with, with the sales tax seasonality. And then the year-to-date actual column is self-explanatory in the variance and the percent. Then we have our comparison to prior year-to-date. So you can see, I'm going to jump out to the right. We, we've included our FY change, FY twenty-five from twenty-four budget. You know, as an example, we took Home Rule Sales Tax up by one point eight million. The total of that column in the far right equals ten point two million. This is not the exact same list we utilized when we adopted the budget for our major tax revenues. That list is a little longer. So we were highlighting an increase of approximately ten point six million at that time. So we incorporated those revenue increases we've been seeing over the last couple of years into our FY twenty-five budget. So most categories are trending. There's a couple that we kind of have, I'll call it on the watch list. Local motor fuel tax is one of those. Right now, it only shows thirty-nine thousand dollars under for year-to-date. That's for two months. That those, both those months, though, were kind of averaging twenty grand under per month. And if you look over three columns, one, two, three, you can see that we are under the prior year-to-date by eighty-four thousand. So we do have some construction at some locations on the west side, but there is a competition, you know, in Normal with the love, so we'll be keeping an eye on that. It may straighten out, but it's, it's an item, you know, one of the categories we'll be watching, you know, just from these early indications. And then the other category we're watching is replacement tax. The State Department of Revenue had made an error in their distribution a couple of years, or lasted for a few years, and they're clawing that back. First year was last year. This year, we thought the offset would be made up in income tax because part of that distribution that previously had gone into replacement tax should have gone into income tax. But right now, you can see that we're three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars under year-to-date in replacement tax and one-ten over in income tax. Now, with replacement, we only get eight payments a year, so it, it could be skewed on the front end. So we're just, you know, there's no warning signs going off right now. But those are a couple of items, you know, that we're just going to, you know, preliminary keeping our eyes on. And so you can see that our variance, variance year-to-date is a hundred ninety thousand dollars under. But again, I, I will reference that we did take our budgets up by over ten million dollars. So, you know, that is trending well to date. I've made this comment previously in some other meetings, you know, we, we do have some concerns related to the economy and the, and the election. Right now, things are looking good. Next slide, please. General Fund. So this exhibit, you know, I've taken the opportunity this, tonight for the new FY twenty-five to kind of run through the way the schedules are laid out. We show our revised budget. We've already had budget amendments for this current fiscal year. I'll get to the deltas in a second. Year-to-date actual revised budget remaining, that's just a delta between the actual and the total budget. And then a percent related to those numbers. And you can see above that, we have an annualized trend number of the twenty-five percent. That is not super useful in, in referencing these percentages because we have a lot of seasonality, but it is a point of reference to include when we're looking at data. And then the projected year-end at this point in time, this early in the year, is really just our budget, our revised budget net of the use of reserves. So just a reminder, reserves, we, we, we kind of plug that into our budget to show a balanced budget, but it's not a revenue that comes in during the year. So all things being held equal, if we had fourteen point seven million dollars in use of reserves, we will show basically a fourteen point seven million dollar loss in the general fund as funded by savings at the end of the year. That's, that's, that's a planned use of savings. So when we're, we're showing the projected year-end as actuals, we remove that number. The original budget for the year, the far-left column, was actually a hundred and forty-three point one million. We've had five point four million dollar amendment for Owens Nursery and about a half million dollars for vehicles that have rolled, that rolled over from twenty-four into twenty-five. So together, that's five point, uh, let's see, and then we had eight point seven million dollars that we adopted as part of the budget for excess equipment. We talked about the fire truck, the ambulances when we were doing the adopted budget. So we have eight point seven million dollars in original, original use of reserves, five point nine million dollars in amended use of reserves. So that's fourteen point six. So that ties to the fourteen point six at the top. And that is a delta between the one forty-nine, one hundred forty-nine million in the revised budget total revenues and the one thirty-four point four million dollars in the projected year-end revenue. So again, we remove the use of reserves from the projected year-end because it's not a revenue that's going to come in. So we'll, we'll just kind of keep that conversation going on that, but I just want to remind that those revenue, those reserves are not current year's revenues. That's how we're funding kind of a loss for the year. We're spending more than we're bringing in, and we're using our savings that we've accumulated. Next slide, please. So same format for the expenditures. Everything's trending pretty well here. We're, we're a little over in compensation and salaries and benefits, but that's to be expected at this time of the year due to seasonality and parks and the pools, et cetera. The, the one item in the expenditure for the general fund that we, we, we're going to be watching is our vacancy savings. We incorporate a vacancy saving number historically into our budget. We offset our salaries. We had been using two point five million dollars a year. This year, going into twenty-five, we changed it to two million. And, but we have had a change in our recruiting process, specifically with fire. So, you know, we'll be watching that because that vacant, vacancy savings, while it's good for our staffing levels, you know, we are targeting those full staffing levels, especially with our public safety departments. It does impact our budget, and it's just a number we've incorporated over time. So going down the projected year-end column, we are projecting to finish FY twenty-four and fifteen million dollars in unassigned reserves. Then we're showing that fourteen point six seven use of reserves that I just highlighted on the revenue page. So with a couple of other adjustments, we're really looking at about thirty-five to thirty-six million dollars. All things being held equal, if the budget came in act exactly as projected at the end of FY twenty-five, we'd have thirty-five to thirty-six million dollars in reserves. And I commented on that, that number last month. Next slide, please. Enterprise funds, just very quickly, our revenue trend, you know, across the bottom, twenty-four percent, twenty-eight percent. You know, the twenty-five percent is our trending number. We're under a little bit in water, and I think that's because we probably took a full month with a new rate increase as, at the beginning of the fiscal year. But the consumption reads, you know, there, there's a little bit of a lag there, so that's why there's a slight delta, I think. I will highlight water as well. We have a four point eight million dollar projected ending reserve balance. But then you can see we have fifteen million dollars in, in PO commitments, ending fund balance of ten million dollars negative. So that's going to be backfilled with the borrowing we've been talking about for the, the water infrastructure plan. So we're working with our financial advisors, a bond council, related to, you know, those initial borrowings. We'll be bringing to council, some, some memos here coming up. A reimbursement resolution so we can apply expenditures that were pre-funding before we do the bond to, to the bond after we execute the bond. Next slide, please. Tonight's focused enterprise fund is, is kind of a fun one to talk about, golf. We've, we've all heard that, that golf has been doing very well over the last few years. I think everyone knows, but, you know, our golf fund has three courses, Highland, Prairie Vista, and the Den. There's a narrative, that's what we refer to them in the budget, but, budget books, that discusses the three golf courses and provides their ratings according to Golf Digest. So there's, I'm just plugging our budget books, you know, and the information that's available in there. I pinged the Parks Department and Jason Wingate, and a couple of items I wanted to highlight, not to steal Eric's thunder from his, maybe the whole presentation, but I'm going to. So calendar year, this is calendar year-to-date, they're twenty-three hundred dollar, twenty-three hundred rounds above last year calendar year-to-date through July, twenty-three hundred rounds. Golf outings are up twenty-five percent over last season. Looking way back, pre-pandemic rounds, twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty-four, there's an increase of twelve thousand rounds annually. And then the new Bloom Golf mobile app, nineteen hundred downloads. And according to Jason Wingate, he thinks the ease of making tee times available online has helped increase the rounds of golf being booked and played at the golf courses. So revenues, revenues are pretty straightforward. We have a slight use of reserves here. Charges for services, one point five million. A year ago, they're one point four million. So trending ahead, you know, fifty-four percent, almost fifty-five percent as, as a trend, but that makes sense because seasonality and most of the revenues are being booked early in the fiscal year. Next slide, please. With their expenditures, they're, obviously their salaries and benefits from a percentage use standpoint are going to be higher through this period in time due to that seasonality. I usually provide an operational review on enterprise funds. So with the golf fund, their revenues, less any transfers in or use of reserves are about two point nine million. That was on the previous screen. And then if you take the, but the budgeted two point nine million, you remove principal expense and interest expense, and the sixty thousand, so remove everything but operations, we're at about two point eight million in operating expenditure. So the golf fund really has about a hundred thousand dollar net surplus every year to pay for capital expenditure. So this is kind of a recurring message we've, we've had over the last several years that, you know, golf funds its operations, but it, it is, it is challenged when it comes to funding its capital improvements. So, but going, last year, we actually, the operating review would have shown that as like about a negative hundred thousand dollars. So we are trending better with the golf fund. Next slide, please. So we want to remind the community that all these reports, including all the budget documents are online. Just go to the city website, the finance page, annual budget, you can find that. And then, you know, it's, it's, it's just August, but FY twenty-six discussions is right around the corner. So we're in calendar twenty-four, reviewing fiscal twenty-five, and pretty soon, we'll be talking about FY twenty-six. So it gets fun with dates pretty soon. So, and I'll see. And I'll see, pause for any questions.
Any questions? Councilor Mottie?
Thank you, it's always very helpful. Thank you so much for sharing that. I recall you um, shared this number within the last few months, but I just want to ask it again back on slide five as we looked at the arena fund. And the context for my question is, I know we're leaning on those reserves for some of the capital projects that people are um, you know, putting forward. Um, but I'm just wondering, you know, when do we lean on those reserves to do something like, you know, address debt that we already have? Um, could you remind me, um, looking at that arena column? I know that's just your operating cost, right, in that fund? Um, how much do we still owe on that facility?
The bonds go through twenty-thirty-five-ish. Um, this, it's it's been a while since I've looked at, yeah, I might have this actually. Um, you give me a moment. I I don't know the number off the top of my head as far as the remaining um, debt. But it is, it is still substantial, though. I I can't say that.
Can you give a ballpark to substantial?
I was gonna say, I guess I didn't bring that. Um, I still think it's nearly near twenty million dollars. But that's, that's kind of a guess right now.
So and and thinking about just again, our total cost of operations and really helping build financial acumen for all of us here, um, which you do a really good job of helping us with. Um, at one point, as you guys are looking at um, spending, spending the reserves, I think um, as you called it, pay paying down our savings, um, at at what point do conversations occur to talk about paying down those savings to reduce the debt load?
Do you want? Well, that's, that's a good question. I mean, there's, it's it's one of those, this is just, in my view, there's a competing interest related to the use of those dollars. So the most, sometimes um, you know, the most economical use of the dollars, you know, sometimes there's greater needs to address that the community has versus just the economic paydown. Now, there there's, there are call dates on those bonds as well. I'm not sure with, I I should have that data in front of me. I know I looked at it just, you know, it's been several months now, but I'm not sure we um, we're past the call dates on those, so I'm not sure we can pay them down just yet or or refinance them.
One thing I'd be interested in seeing at a future meeting is is really the cost uh, to us for all of the debt that we are servicing and really just having a clear picture as to what is all of our outstanding debt. Um, I just think, you know, in looking out for um, you know, the best interest of the people who live here, um, and including in generations to come, that we should probably all have a really clear understanding of what those numbers are. So thank you very much again, it's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you, Scott, looks like we don't have any other questions, thank you, appreciate it. Next is a city managers discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council again. Uh, just before I get on to some of the specifics, we had a smaller agenda tonight and a very, you know, one item on our um, regular agenda, but we had some very impactful items. Uh, tonight, you paved the way for an additional daycare facility within the community, which is of uh, high importance and there is a lot of need in this community for more daycare. You also approved contracts uh, for more infrastructure uh, for sidewalks and for subdivisions and and concrete work. So just wanted to point out that there were some very impactful things on the agenda tonight. If you could go to the next slide. Uh, just give a a quick update regarding homelessness. Um, it's it's August and today's probably one of the hottest days of the summer, a hundred and four, whatever it reached today. But for the last couple of weeks, we've a- actually started planning for the winter and we're starting to put plans in place for how we're going to address homelessness in our community for this upcoming winter. Uh, one of the items on the agenda tonight was regarding our emergency management language. We updated that to be closer in line with the state language and that will pave the way so that we can have some operational winter shelters, this warming centers this winter. So appreciate that, there will be more to come on on how we're our plan to address the tent encampment and the homelessness uh, within the next uh, couple of weeks. Uh, but appreciate uh, the passage of that tonight and there will be more to come on that. Next slide. Today, uh, it was actually just at the last meeting on August twelfth, this council approved the a consultant agreement for continuous improvement. Today was actually day one for us, we had our consultant onsite, he'll be here for a couple of days. Had a lot of great meetings today, a lot of great interactions, but wanted to share with the council that this project's underway and uh, we are, we're hitting it with full force. Next slide. The concrete has been poured for the water tower at the Prairie Vista Golf Course. Uh, just sharing that, construction will probably go through the fall of twenty-twenty-five, but is underway. Wanted to clear up a misconception, we heard some people were concerned that this was going to lower their water pressure in the area. It will actually have the opposite impact, it will improve their water pressure. Uh, but this project's underway. This is one of those projects of the four-hundred million dollars that our water director Ed Andrews has presented to this council before. This project actually goes to the system-wide distribution and again, uh, making headway on this project. Next slide. Finally, tonight, uh, wanted to to end again on a positive note. Um, the, our public works department is renting an asphalt paver. Uh, previously, all of our public works crews shoveled asphalt by hand and with a shovel, uh, very time-consuming, uh, also potential for injury and and other safety concerns. We are now renting an asphalt paver. Um, and if if we like it, if it works, we're going to have the ability to purchase it, so we're very excited about that. They actually got it today and they made some great headway today with it. So uh, these crews are doing a fantastic job. We really see, think there are going to be a lot of benefits from this. Uh, again, I I think that we're going to see uh, what can be done in a very short amount of time, what we were doing in many, many days to do. It does take a couple more crew members to operate it, but again, there's going to be so much efficiency with this that we really think this is going to be a key strategy to improving our roads and to uh, making our infrastructure even better. So that is all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, and just kind of keeping with the theme of uh, street repair. Um, I um, you know, I've been hearing uh, complaints from uh, folks about um, you know, the inconvenience of some of the repairs. So uh, in a way, that that is a good thing, uh, because we're actually getting some some work done. I've seen uh, crews out on uh, Fort Jesse and and then we've got uh, Eagle Creek, Golden Eagle, that was approved, uh, some some streets there. So that I think is uh, is very exciting. And also um, one of the thing that that's exciting, um, you know, I know we had a press conference to announce uh, federal funding. Uh, and I think uh, I'm just very um, happy that we are um, you know, so far, I think it's been four million dollars for for community projects, uh, not only um, uh, Hamilton Road, uh, but also um, East Gate area, Locust Colton. Uh, so we're making uh, a lot of progress in in that area and that's something that's very exciting because we, we did say that that's something that we wanted to do, be a little bit more aggressive in terms of uh, obtaining funding from some of our uh, legislators. Um, and and so I want to thank them uh, for uh, really, uh, you know, being supportive of some of the projects that we have in the community because we can use that money to do other things. So with that, I'm, I'll turn it over to council members to see, okay, Councilmember Hendricks?
Sorry, I got a few things. Um, so a couple of events that I wanted to highlight that are coming up. Um, first is the Ecology Action Center is ho- hosting their Fall Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event. Um, we've still got a little bit of time, so I'll probably make another plug later on, but that's on September twenty-eighth. Uh, it's free and open to all Illinois residents, but you do have to make an appointment to be able to drop things off and you can do that at H H W McLean dot org. Um, another event on Saturday, September seventh, is um, an event that celebrates the impact of the city's Creativity Center. Um, it's from four to six at the Creativity Center, which is at one-oh-seven East Chestnut Street, if you've never been there. Um, you know, they're going to have opportunities to explore the space if you've never been. Um, they've got performances uh, by some of the groups that are there, there's going to be a live community mural. Um, and then they'll have food trucks and all kinds of other stuff as well. Um, the last thing that I wanted to mention was, I just wanted to thank uh, City Manager Jurgens and Assistant Manny Manager Tyus. Um, they came most recently to the Downtown Business Owners Group that was held last week and I attended as as well. Um, and since then, I've heard many positive comments from business owners, which I also know they've been expressing to you, which is great. Um, I think they're seeing the changes. Um, and I know we've got some, some ways to go still with with downtown and some of the issues that we've been having, but I think the biggest thing is that they feel seen and heard and and they see action uh, happening. So I appreciate both of you.
How about this, Councilor Ward?
I would like to um, invite everyone to a celebration of one of the best things in our community and especially one of the best things in Ward Seven, and that is Bent Elementary School on North Roosevelt Avenue, which on the seventh of September will be celebrating one-hundred years of being a a gem in our neighborhoods. Um, there will be a celebration at the school from four to six P M on September seventh and I encourage everyone to to join me in congratulating the the um, the Bent Superstars because they are indeed superstars and the kids at that school go on to do great things.
Thank you. I think at this point, uh, we are moving to pro session, right? Trying to find my notes here, sorry. Doing that for a second. Okay. So at this point, I'm going to ask for a a motion to enter into executive session per sections two C eleven and two C twelve of five I L C S one-twenty to discuss pending litigation and claim settlement. So Madam Clerk?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin and second by Councilmember Hendricks.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dannenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumppler?
Yes.
Okay, council is entering executive session per section two C eleven and two C twelve of five I L C S one-twenty to discuss pending litigation and claim settlement. The room must be cleared. Following executive session, council will resume the open session meeting, but no additional action will be taken except to adjourn. Thank you. And then they'll have food trucks and all kinds of other stuff as well. The last thing that I wanted to mention was I just wanted to thank City Manager Jurgens and Assistant Manny, Manager Tyus. They came most recently to the Downtown Business Owners Group that was held last week, and I attended as, as well. And since then, I've heard many positive comments from business owners, which I also know they've been expressing to you, which is great. I think they're seeing the changes and I know we've got some, some ways to go still with, with downtown and some of the issues that we've been having. But I think the biggest thing is that they feel seen and heard and, and they see action happening. So I appreciate both of you. And this Councilmember Ward.
I would like to invite everyone to a celebration of one of the best things in our community and especially one of the best things in Ward Seven, and that is Bent Elementary School on North Roosevelt Avenue, which on the 7th of September will be celebrating 100 years of being a gem in our neighborhoods. There will be a celebration at the school from four to six P M. On September 7th. And I encourage everyone to, to join me in congratulating the, the, um, the Bent superstars because they are indeed superstars and the kids at that school go on to do great things.
Thank you. Um. I think at this point we are moving to pro session, right? Trying to find my notes here. Sorry. One, two, three, four seconds. Okay. So at this point, I'm going to ask for a, a motion to enter into executive session per section two C 11 and two C 12 of five I L C S 120 to discuss pending litigation and claim settlement. Um. So Madam Clerk.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin and second by Councilmember Hendricks.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Motney.
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, council is entering executive session per section two C 11 and two C 12 of five I L C S 120 to discuss pending litigation and claim settlement. The room must be cleared. Following executive session, council will resume the open session meeting, but no additional action will be taken except to adjourn. Thank you. Did you get the time that we closed? Seven twelve.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, zero seconds. Second by Councilmember Hendricks.
Can we interrupt for just a second? Can the motion be to return to open session and adjourn?
Okay, return to open session and adjourn.
Perfect. And I just need to do a voice vote really quick.
Voice vote?
Yes, please. I, Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Motney.
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. We will see you in a couple of weeks.